Okay, good evening and thank you for joining us for committee interviews being held just before our council meeting this evening. We will be interviewing one candidate for the Parks and Recreation Committee, two candidates for the Transportation Safety Committee, and one candidate for the Wetlands and Creeks Committee. And just so all of the candidates are aware, we'll do the interviews now and then later in our meeting, we will actually do the nominations and voting. And you're welcome to stick around or watch it from home, whatever you'd prefer to do. So we're going to start first with Parks and Recreation. So we'd like to welcome our applicant Travis Gall. So Travis, if you just want to maybe pop up to the microphone and we'll just ask you a few questions. And we're not going to put you on the timer or anything, but if you wanted to just like about a minute, you know, long for the answers would be great. Okay, so thanks for being here. And I've got question one, so I'll go first. Members of the Parks and Recreation Committee advise the City Council and Planning Commission on topics related to recreation, parklands, trails, and public facilities. Why are you interested in serving on the committee and what special skill set can you provide to this advisory committee?
I got my undergrad back in the 1990s. After that, I moved to Portland, Oregon, and San Francisco. I saw what works, what might not work so well, and I think I'd like to bring some of that knowledge to the committee. I also have a daughter and a stepdaughter, and I really want to make sure that our community is a place where they have all the opportunities that I think could be possible. My wife and I are avid skateboarders. We've been, I've been doing that for about 35 years. I was a member, a board member of the Humboldt Skate Park Collective for five years. I resigned that post this summer, hence I'm looking for another area that might, that I might be able to contribute to.
Great, thank you very much. So council member Stillman has question two.
So you probably shared it already, but so please share about your experiences has connected you with Arcata Parks and Open Space and recreational opportunities. You already covered skateboarding.
Yep, exactly. During the five years at the Humboldt Skate Park Collective, we were connected to many different organizations, many shareholders, stakeholders in the skateboarding community. We put on contests, did a lot of fundraising, been working our umbrella nonprofit. We were the holders of the nonprofit status for smaller organizations underneath, including Willow Creek, McKinleyville, a range of other stakeholders as well. Can you repeat the question again so I answer it in full?
Please share about an experience that has connected you with Arcata's parks and open space or recreational opportunities. Skateboarding was probably a good one.
Yes, most definitely. I was also a skate camp counselor at Rampart, the indoor skate park over there. I gave private one-on-one lessons, also volunteered. Through that process, I got to know a lot of the skateboarders in the community and participate, participate in demonstrations, fundraisers, events around town, both in Arcata and outside the community in Humboldt County. Yep.
Hey Travis, thanks for being here. What do you see as upcoming challenges and opportunities for the city's parks, facilities, and recreation offerings?
Sure. I'm going to use the lens of skateboarding to answer this question. As you know, the Arcata Skate Park has been around since the 1990s, although a lot of people use that facility. It's very outdated and the concrete is very pitted and roughed, but not only that, the design is very outdated. We've come a long way as far as skateboard design, or sorry, skate park design and the use of a skate park. It doesn't have to be just one subset of the population. It could be everyone from a toddler to someone my age, almost 50, or even older. So I think what we want to do is capture some of that energy and recognize that skateboarding is something that people from every age group can participate in. The Arcata park isn't really suited to that, so what I would like to see or introduce is in the concept of not another full-blown skate park, but we can have skate spots around the community. So I think that would also serve a lot of the children who wouldn't have the ability to drive all the way over to the Arcata Skate Park. Sorry, I'm a little nervous being on television. I did know this was part of it, so bear with me. But I really think that if we could explore the idea of skate spots, which Portland, Oregon has incorporated into their communities, San Francisco, a number of other communities have actually enacted this, it could be advantageous for a lot of the kids that just don't have the means to get around by a vehicle. Okay.
Two questions. My first one, I just noticed that your home address is Eureka, and then it says live and work in the Arcading Planning area. So I just wanted to see how that fit together.
Yep, there is a spot for one non-Arcata resident on the commission. I work at Coldwell Banker Sellers Realty in Arcata, just two blocks away.
We should, yeah, just to make the, that's totally fine with me. Just to make the application more accurate, maybe we could like add a box for that kind of situation or something. Cool. Please share an example of successful, I mean, it sounds like you already talked about successful collaboration you've been a part of in the realm of parks, recreation, or community building. What made that collaboration successful?
I think through the Humboldt Skate Park Collective, we worked with a number of different groups, from vendors to skateboard shops to just community members, putting on these fundraisers, demonstrations, having people from out of the area, pros and amateurs sponsored, skateboarders, combined with music, entertainment, video production, things like that. I think there's a lot of moving parts in one of those events. So it was really fun being behind the scenes and sometimes in front of the scenes, helping put boots on the ground to get that done. Also just raising a lot of money for either the McKinleyville Skate Park, which we should be, I'm no longer part of that organization, so I won't comment, but we did raise a lot of money and we hope to break ground at some point in the future. Does that sort of answer it?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Fantastic.
Hi Travis, thank you for being here. I was going to ask, the question I was going to ask was how can you create more inclusive parks and recreation programs? What vision do you have for that? I know you talked a little bit more about age inclusivity, but I'm just thinking about especially older kids too in different programs and also, you know, low income, anything like that. So yeah, how do you think you can create more inclusive park and recreation programs?
I think skateboarding, again, when I was over at Rampart, more of the, most of the clients that were one-on-one skateboard students were female, which was really cool. I have a daughter at home and a stepdaughter, so I really want to get behind that. I found it was really empowering to watch these young girls learn to skateboard and take charge and do things that normally they might be a little uncomfortable to do if they're at a male-dominated skate park. So again, I think the skate spot concept might be advantageous to allow a lot of these females that might be a little intimidated, or some of these males that might be intimidated by what can be sometimes a very masculine testosterone-heavy vibe at the skate park. Does that make sense?
Cool.
Awesome, thank you. You're very passionate about the subject. It's good to hear.
Thanks, yeah. I'm just going to that as a go-to, but I'd like to expand my knowledge as far as other offerings, different camps, et cetera. Yeah.
All right, any further questions for Travis? Thanks for taking the time to be here and interview, and we will talk about you in a little while.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Take care.
Okay, so next that takes us to the Transportation, yeah, Transportation Safety Committee. And we've got two applicants for this, and I believe they're both coming in on Zoom.
Yes, Genevieve is here. We don't have Jason here yet, so we might just have the one interview. He did confirm earlier, so.
Okay, do you want us, should we just skip ahead and do the other one? And see if he, okay, okay, we'll go ahead and interview. If he comes on, let us know. All right, well, welcome, Genevieve. Thank you for taking the time this evening to interview for the Transportation Safety Committee. So, yeah, welcome. So again, I have question one, so I will go first, and then we'll just go down the line of questions. And again, if you, you know, about a minute for an answer is great, and we'll go ahead and jump right in. So super straightforward here. Why do you want to be part of the Transportation and Safety Committee?
Yeah, so I'm somebody, a resident of Arcata who, you know, sees myself as a really strong advocate for pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, you know, and just really kind of expanding what our definition of, you know, transportation safety is. I feel like now more than ever, Arcata has a lot of potential to kind of see ourselves into the future and really see some positive change in how we move ourselves around. And I think this would be an amazing opportunity to be a part of that change and to really contribute what I know and the passion that I have to improving, you know, the city streets and usability.
Thank you. Councilmember Stillman, I think you have the next question, number two.
So my question is, what do you know about the Transportation Safety Committee and its role with the city?
Yeah, so I have, do attend meetings, and I know that they, in addition to taking in commentary and concerns from residents, that they do work with you directly on making recommendations to changes and also reviewing larger city plans as far as, you know, any updates being made to roads and weighing in really on, you know, how those new plans are going to be welcoming in additional road users and then, you know, discussing with you guys how to go about engineering or how to move forward.
Thank you for that. And councilmember Watson, I believe you have question number three.
Hi, would you please describe your interest in various transportation modes such as vehicular, pedestrian, bicyclist, mass transit, and skateboarding?
Yeah, so I mean, you know, everybody moves around, so I could say that my interest in improving those systems is pretty personal. I am somebody who, I do drive to work every day, but you know, I also ride my bike around the city of Arcata. It's my preferred method of getting around. If I'm not riding, I'm walking. I'm a hopeful transit user at this time. You know, I think that it maybe can be relied upon that there are some improvements that can be made to the transit systems in Arcata, but again, I think it has a lot of potential. I think that there's, it's a positive outlook for the things that I see for, you know, moving around the city of Arcata.
Right, yeah, and then I noticed, looks like you have, you know, a lot of data management experience and statistical analysis experience and your skills. And, you know, we always really like to make data-driven decisions, so you know, if you do get appointed, I think that'd be great if you kind of brought that eye to the decision-making process. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah, seeing the forest through the trees when it comes to all the numbers. I have a good eye for that.
Great, thank you for being here, Genevieve. So what are some objectives or goals that you personally have for serving on this committee?
Personal objectives, you know, again, as somebody who likes to walk and likes to bike around the city of Arcata, not only improving those systems and those connectivity and those facilities for myself, but for the city at large, you know, I would not be the only one using those facilities. This is something that I hope to see, you know, future residents, future generations of the city of Arcata feeling comfortable to use. And I think that now is a better time, as good a time as any really better, I think, than maybe any other time to make, be a strong advocate for those changes.
Thanks, Genevieve. So why should we choose you for this position? What do you think you bring that's unique to this position?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, in addition to being somebody, like I said, I am a multimodal road user in every sense of the word. So it's, I'm, you know, kind of boots-on-the-ground type, type user of these facilities. In addition to that, I love the city of Arcata. It's about the potential that the city has, and I see, I see a good future, I see a lot of positive changes, I see a lot of potential, and then obviously a lot of passion for, you know, how we're transforming the way that we move people around, you know, and making those improvements.
Thank you so much.
Okay, that concludes the interview for today, and we will discuss this a little bit later on in the meeting. So thanks again for, for being here and expressing interest in this position.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so that takes us into our Wetlands and Creeks Committee interviews, and we've got Justin Hawkins here, so welcome, Justin. Absolutely. So the Wetlands and Creeks Committee advises the city in matters relating to the policies affecting creeks, riparian areas, wetland, and tideland resources in Arcata. Why are you interested in serving on the committee and what special skill set can you provide to this committee?
Yeah, so for a big picture, I'm really interested in getting involved in local politics generally, and this feels like a good way to dip my toe in and get a sense of the lay of the land from the inside. I've been living in Arcata for three years, and I'm really enjoying it, and I'm hoping to sort of integrate myself further into the community as I graduate from school and have a lot more bandwidth, so to speak. Yeah, and then for personal skills I bring for the community, I've done habitat restoration professionally, recreationally, I've studied it in school from a couple different perspectives, not just from like the ecology side, but also, so I'm an engineering student, and we've been diving really deep into these sort of things, but also particularly stormwater systems as well, so the urban interface between us and our local creeks. So yeah, I want to bring that perspective in there.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what do you see as upcoming opportunities and challenges for the city's wetlands, creeks, and riparian areas?
Yeah, I think the largest opportunity, let's call it that, is the, there's a huge influx of people coming into Arcata. I mean, there's going to be a huge expansion of urban resources in all sorts of ways, lots of development coming, and so managing that interface between our creeks and the residents and developing needs of the community is going to be really interesting and I think provide a lot of opportunities. I think what is bringing a lot of people up here is the natural resources of the area, and so finding a way, good compromises between the increasing population while still being able to showcase our natural resources. Even here in town, I really enjoyed, I have Ganin Slough, which is a small creek running through my backyard, and that's really quite a treat. I'd like to sort of expand the opportunities for people. Thank you.
Please describe your interest in various, oop, wrong one, hold on. Please describe your knowledge, experience, and/or connection to Arcata's wetlands, creeks, or sensitive habitat areas.
Sure, absolutely. So as I mentioned, through my engineering program, I've done a lot of design projects in and around Arcata, the greater Humboldt area, and so I've had to do a lot of research and conversations with professionals regarding the ecology, as well as the hydraulics and just general hydrology of the area. And that's been pretty extensive, and most of my on-the-boots restoration has been down in San Francisco Bay Area, and that's a lot of sort of that community volunteer work and managing those sorts of people. So those are, yeah, my skill set.
Do you, you know, from the work you've done, just your own knowledge, do you have any thoughts on how climate change and sea level rises could affect our wetlands and creeks?
Yeah, absolutely. Definitely. Well, so what we're going to see, according to literature and a lot of the science, we're going to have a lot of periods of droughts followed by intense flooding and intense precipitation events. And it was last year, we had some pretty intense flooding on Humboldt State Campus and all around town and generally. So I think the stormwater infrastructure is going to be particularly impacted, so that's kind of concerning for sure. And then sea level rise is definitely going to impact, I think the most notable impact for sea level rise is going to be on the one-on-one quarters, both in and out of Arcata. Now, that's obviously outside of the purview of the committee, but those are my main concerns.
Thank you very much.
That's a good question, councilmember Watson, thank you. And you probably, I think you've answered this in several answers, but why do you want to serve on this committee?
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I'm really interested in getting involved in local politics. I think that's kind of the missing link of the, how to put this, addressing climate change, so to speak, is getting more people activated and sort of raising civil engagement, and that's what I'm interested in. I think building up from the local level, we can't just expect to magically vote in the right president and they'll fix everything. So yeah, I think that's my primary interest, and then it's kind of in alignment with my passion for restoration, ecological restoration, particularly of our waterways.
Thanks for being here, Justin. Please share an example of a successful collaboration or project that you've been part of in the realm of restoration, open space, or community building, and what made that collaboration successful?
Yeah, sure. So I was part of a large restoration effort down, this is in Marin County at Greengulch Zen Temple, if you're familiar with, beautiful space, highly recommend visiting. And I led the efforts for a two-acre restoration project, and most of the labor was through volunteer labor, and that was just, it's communication and patience, like, all the way, and not really tailoring your expectations around that was really important. But yeah, the main thing was just communication, I think, just coordinating all the volunteers, volunteers that, yeah, so, but anyhow, it was pretty successful, yeah, just tailoring your expectations and being open-minded.
Okay, well, thank you, Justin, for being here, and we'll discuss this shortly and let you know.
Okay, absolutely, thanks so much.
Thanks. So we've got about 16 minutes until 6 o'clock, when we'll start our regularly scheduled meeting, and so we'll take a little break until 6. Thank you. Good evening and thank you for viewing the September 21st meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. First, I'd like to start with the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. And the next item is the flag, pledge allegiance, flag salute. If you would like, please join us. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Present.
Councilmember Stillman.
Present.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged on to Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speech, speak on. If you are on the phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial star six on your phone. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then moving to the online comments. So we won't be going back and forth, so if you're wanting to comment, please make sure that you line up at the podium or raise your hand as soon as public comment is requested for that item. So next we have ceremonial matters, and we have got two proclamations today, and we've got different council members that will be reading them, and so we have someone in person to accept both of them. So after the proclamation is read, that council member will take it down and present it to you, and then if you'd like to say anything, you can go to the podium and say something if you would like. So first, we have a proclamation in honor of the North Coast Stand Down, which is September 29th through October 1st, 2022.
In honor of the North Coast Stand Down, September 29th through October 1st, 2022, whereas during wartime, exhausted combat soldiers can be ordered to stand down and go from the battlefield to a secure place for rest and recovery. And whereas today, a stand-down is a grassroots event designed to help veterans and their families get medical employment, social service, legal, and other types of information and assistance. And whereas the most effective veterans programs are community-based, nonprofit, veterans helping veterans programs like the North Coast Stand Down. The program's goal is to provide needed services to veterans and their families. Whereas many of America's homeless adults have served their country, and the armed services in the North Coast Stand Down is committed to giving homeless veterans access to additional short and long-term resources like shelter and drug and alcohol recovery And whereas previous North Coast Stand Down events have helped hundreds of veterans get the services to which they were entitled, the 2022 North Coast Stand Down will continue to make a positive difference for local veterans and their families, and will raise community awareness of the needs of returning active-duty soldiers. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Arcata hereby honors the North Coast Stand Down organization and volunteers for addressing the needs of North Coast veterans. The council encourages all veterans, all veterans and their families in need of services to attend the 2022 North Coast Stand Down on Thursday, September 29th through Saturday, October 1st, 2022, at the Humboldt County Fairgrounds in Ferndale, dated today, September 21st. Signed by our mayor, Stacy Atkins Salazar, and accepting we have Ann Poole.
Good evening, and thank you for acknowledging us again this year. Stand Down is doing its 18th year this end of this week, starting up, and I've been involved with them for 10 years, and we expect to have hopefully our usual crowd. We'll see, we've been shut down for the last two years, so things are a little iffy like everybody. But we have services set up for outreach, we have three meals a day, those cooked by local organizations that are stepping up to the plate. We have pet services, we have clothing. I think there, anybody that shows up is going to be very happy. It's open to all veterans, all ages, and their immediate families. So anybody that is interested in coming, please show up. Also, we are always looking for volunteers. Come down just for the day, mingle with some of the veterans, get to know them, and help out. I will make one notice, there's nine different events going on that weekend up here in Humboldt. As far north as Trinidad, Blue Lake, down to Fortuna. It's going to be a busy, busy weekend, so I hope we get a good turnout. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation and recognition of International Walk to School Day, October 5th, 2022.
Whereas millions of schoolchildren in 40 different countries are celebrating International Walk to School Day this October by participating in activities for International Walk to School Day on Wednesday, October 5th, 2022. And whereas children and adults worldwide join Walk to School Day events to have fun and raise awareness about how walking, bicycling, and skateboarding to school helps children, communities, and the environment. And whereas when children walk and bike to school, especially in walking school buses and bicycle trains, they have time to socialize with their parents and friends, be outdoors, and get to know their neighborhoods. And whereas the city of Arcata strives to be a leader in safe routes to school programs which improve walkability, bikeability, and safety around schools, and which build physical activity into schoolchildren's daily routines. And whereas driving students to school in private vehicles contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution, when fewer cars are on the road, the entire community benefits, and children's walking and biking routes to school are safer. And whereas parents and other community members have helped build Arcata's safe routes to school by identifying pedestrian safety issues and advocating for environmental policy and personal changes to create more pedestrian and advocating for environmental policy and personal changes to create more pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes October 5th, 2022, to be International Walk to School Day, and the council encourages community members to consider the safety and health of children today and every day, dated September 21st, 2022, and signed by our mayor, Stacy Atkins Salazar. And Carrie Hurst, are you here to accept?
So on behalf of Arcade Elementary School District, that's Arcade Elementary and Sunny Bray Middle School, I would like to accept this recognition of International Walk to School Day on Wednesday, October 5th. And the students and staff are of both Arcade Elementary and Sunny Bray Middle School will be walking from Murphy's Markets. And we are really looking forward to participating in this annual worldwide event, celebrating an active lifestyle in safe communities. And I'm really looking forward to an increased crowd now that we are fully back. So thank you, city council, for your declaration and proclamation of International Walk to School Day.
You're welcome, and thank you for being here.
Okay, next, we have early oral communications. And this 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. So please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers are limited to two minutes. And there will also be time for public comments specifically on each agenda item. And then also, again, at the end of the meeting, there will be time for items not on the agenda. So we've got 15 minutes allowed for this. And so we will start. And just a reminder, I think people that are here have already grabbed cards, but we've got four cards for people in person to speak. And then we will take the first four folks online with their hands raised. So go ahead and get going in person. So whoever has card number one.
Yes, it's, I'm just saying hello to everybody. It's been a while. And I wanted to thank everyone who is responsible for fixing the roads, that the roads that are being fixed now and painted. It's really helpful. I guess I, I wanted to give a shout out to the Arcata bus drivers, Arcata Transit Service. They are awesome. They kept us open for everyone to ride, all during the pandemic. They've worked so hard. And so, I'm, sorry, I'm so nervous. Just, thank you. So it's, I'm giving a shout out to Vance, and Leanne, and Jennifer, and Casey, and Dwight, and, let's see, Larry, and Mark, and Douglas. They were really, they've worked so hard for us. And I've been riding the bus for years, over 30 years, and it's just been a lifeline for me in this community. So one more thing, I wanted to extend a kind of challenge to everyone in this room, to ride the buses, and to specifically the red route, the gold route, and the orange route on Saturday, because you will get a real, a different picture of Arcata, perhaps. You will see a lot of things that will teach you. And I, what's it? Sort of lost my track here. It's, I wanted to comment on the roads, I guess, because I'm so glad they're being fixed, because the buses are actually being badly damaged by the potholes. And, and the bridge, one of the bridges up to HU, the curvy one, the bus crashes onto it and then crashes off. And so, and the bridge has potholes. So it's kind of a challenge to, just for the community to ride the buses and pay attention to the state of the roads. And thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for commenting.
Good evening, city council members, staff, and folks in the room and watching. My name is Joanne McGary. And today is the International Day of Peace, that you had a proclamation about the last meeting, I do believe. And I'm wearing my peace and love flag in honor of that. And I rode my trike over here, trying to avoid potholes. It also is the third anniversary of when Sofia Pereira, as a city council member, requested that our city declare a climate emergency, and such was declared three years ago. It's also the United Nations Climate Week, and Secretary General Antonio Guterres has been warning us, as he has for several years now, that we are in dire straits and we need to start taking dramatic action now, dramatic action now, because the floods in Pakistan, as I wrote in an email to you, are going to be lapping at our doors in terms of sea level rise because of inaction by small little towns like Arcata and big, huge countries like the United States for not doing what we need to do to stop carbon emissions, greenhouse gas emissions. So I am just going to show again a piece of art, local artist made, and I bought. And it's a quote from about a year or two ago of Greta Thunberg's, and it says, blah, blah, blah. And I'm not necessarily saying that to you directly as a council, but I'm saying that as a overall philosophical thought, that we really can't just do so little anymore. We need to do so much to make just enough of a difference on this planet. And so thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Albro Mayor, council members, David, Aaron. I'm here, I'm talking about the joint study session, specifically the L Street pathway and Linear Park question that came up. This is significant for a variety of reasons, one of which it was the first time a committee decision had come before the council. And second, that I regard this as a fork in the road. It's not a decision that can be put off for a year or five years, as may have been suggested. It represents a big change in everything that comes from this point. I urge you to, the Transportation Safety Committee met yesterday. I urge you to watch the video of that. It's somewhat unfair for me to make a synopsis. I'd rather you do it yourself when you read it, but I will anyway. Chair Dave Ryan said that they studied this over a period of six and a half hours, over four separate meetings. They didn't understand how you felt that they would not have understood it. The, I feel that Todd Durgens's presentation was very misleading. It illustrated the benefits of his presentation or his view, but not the detriments. Did not illustrate the benefits of the alternative, which would be to have L Street be a linear park. And last, I'll talk about this more later. I think it's necessary that this be a unanimous vote on the city council, and that we get to a cohesive point in the process, so that it is a unanimous vote. Whichever three of you, after the election, wind up voting on this, it should be very clear. And I'll talk about this more at the end of the meeting. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Do we have a number four in the room? Or anyone? Okay, how about folks online?
All right. Her first online is James. Go ahead, James.
Hi, hello to staff, and also to council. I would also like to speak to the, in support of the Transportation Safety Committee's initial recommendation on August 2nd, and sort of a follow-up on September 20th for L Street Linear Park and Nada Three Road. The Linear Park is an existing right-of-way. It won't rely on privately-owned public spaces. Presently, there are a number of open spaces along the L Street rails with trails corridored at the north and the south end. The L Street couplet will rely on rail banking of the L Street corridor, and the paving over of open spaces and coastal wetlands to the south, and paving over of open spaces to the north, reducing the existing footprint of the L Street rails with trails. This option goes against the spirit of rails-to-trails normal outcomes. An L Street Linear Park can utilize and enhance open spaces. The rail banking of the corridor represents a blank slate from Samo Boulevard II Alliance, leaving numerous options for recreation and landscaping improvement. The L Street Linear Park would enhance the main artery between numerous parks to the north and trail networks to the south of the Martian Wildlife Sanctuary, excuse me, Miss Wildlife Sanctuary to the south. It represents a guaranteed park with a proposed gateway infill. The language of the gateway calls for public spaces and parks to rely on the concept of publicly-owned private spaces provided in amendment by developers. Developers may choose a different route of approval. The L Street Linear Park will be both a thorough fair for travelers and residents, in addition to a play and gathering area that offers numerous proposed housing units satisfying a major goal of the gateway draft, to have quality trails and open spaces within 200 feet of every housing unit. The vision of the L Street Linear Park relies on community-driven output to help guide it. And in general, the goal would be beautify landscape and influence recreation and wetlands and open space enhancement. The L Street Linear Park represents a welcome mat for the future great Redwood Trail, a trail that will be accessed by residents of Arcata, Humboldt County, and California and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just giving you one more second here, but seeing no other online early oral communications.
Our next item is a meeting of the successor agency to the Arcata Community Development Agency. So sitting as a successor agency board is new for a few of us, but this is the legal entity that manages the remaining bond debt service from the city's original redevelopment agency. So we act on these matters separately. So the next item that we have, we are acting as the successor agency. And it is a consent calendar item. And all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the agency and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, agency board members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. We have one item, to direct the secretary and clerk of the board to file the 2022 Notice of Biennial Review, Conflict of Interest Code with the city of Arcata stating that no amendment is required. Is there anyone, any member of the board here that would like to pull that item?
I would move for adoption.
Okay, do we have anyone from the public that would like to pull this item?
Seeing none.
I'll second Alex's motion.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. And do we, do we take public input on this item? Okay, so is there any public input on this particular item?
Secretary of this board. Bridget, okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so now we are back as the council. And we are to arm the council consent calendar. And again, all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, then the item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. A is bi-weekly report on disbursements. B, adopt ordinance number 1558, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code, Conflict of Interest Code, Title II, Administration, Chapter 8, Conflict of Interest, Article 2, City Employees, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title alone. C, reappoint Fred Johansson and Justin Fox to the Public Safety Committee for three-year terms ending September 30th of 2025. D, reappoint Guelen Palaga and James Zollick to the Energy Committee for three-year terms ending September 30th, 2025. Reappoint Robin Hashem and Jeff Knapp to the Transaction and Use Tax Oversight Committee for four-year terms ending September 30th, 2026. And F, reappoint Amanda Hickey to the Economic Development Committee, and Jim McDonald to the Historic Landmarks Committee for three-year terms ending September 30th, 2025. Would any council member like to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
Then I would like to move for adoption of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any members of the public that would like to remove an item before we go into that? Or from staff?
None online.
Okay, let's go ahead and go to public input then. Any public input on this? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, so New Business, we have appoint one new member to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term expiring March 31st, 2026. One new member to the Transportation Safety Committee for a term expiring March 31st, 2024. And one new member to the Wetlands and Creeks Committee for a term expiring March 31st, 2026. And we did those interviews a little bit earlier. So do we either have questions and comments or motions to be made?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Travis Gall to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term expiring March 31st, 2026. Genevieve Serna to the Transportation Safety Committee for a term expiring March 31st, 2024. And Justin Hawkins to the Wetlands and Creeks Committee for a term expiring March 31st, 2026. And thank you for your willingness to serve.
Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this?
Seeing none online.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and thank you to the applicants, and congratulations. Item B under New Business is a public scoping hearing for potential projects for funding under the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program, 2022 Notice of Funds Availability. Can we have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loyah, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Before you tonight is the scoping hearing for the permanent local housing allocation funding the city would like to apply for. We have a little over $1 million that will be allocated to the city of Arcata. And in order to apply for those funds, we first have to take public input on potential uses. To that end, we've also included in attachment A, the list of eligible activities that these funds can be used for, as well as a recommendation for some ideas to consider during the scoping hearing for application that will be set for a further date. Our next step will then to be, to come back after a notice hearing to get authorization to apply for those funds. And again, they are on an allocation basis, so it's not a competitive funding. We just have to decide what it is that we want to use them for for our community. And primarily, what our recommendations focus on is maximum flexibility for the use of these funds, and filling in gaps for other sources of funding throughout the state or federal sources that we typically tap into. Do not allow us to use funds. And so we've got a couple of recommendations here. I won't go into those now unless you have questions. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the council for any clarifying questions, and the public to provide their input into what we should use these funds for.
Do we have any questions for Director Loyah on this?
I would like to talk about workforce housing, of course. Would this apply to that?
Yeah, in fact, there's a set aside for workforce housing. If you look on packet page 35, the last paragraph there under the eligible uses of these funds states that 20% of the money is in the fund states that 20% of the monies in the fund are required by statute to be expended for affordable owner-occupied workforce housing. And then there's also other eligible uses of funds for rental workforce housing. And the nice thing about these funds, whereas many of our funding sources are restricted to folks earning 80% area median income or less, these will actually, in some cases, allow you to go up to 150% of area median income. And so it gives us a little bit of access to help folks in that sort of middle income bracket. And that's one of the suggestions of staff is that we focus on those middle income brackets with at least some of these funds.
Thank you.
Yeah, it talks about 120% of area median income. Roughly, do you know what that is?
Yeah, it depends on family size. The incomes are set based on the family size. The higher, the more number of people in your household, the higher income you can have to meet that threshold. But a good rule of thumb for thinking about it is that median income is around $50,000 right now. And so 120% of that or 150% of that is kind of a rough cut way of looking at it.
Isn't, is this something we currently do or have done in the past?
No, this is a new funding source that was, it's now three years old. We didn't have staff capacity to, you know, come forward, prepare the plan and the application previously. But if we don't apply for it now, we'll lose the first two years of allocation significantly cut into the amount of money that we'll be able to use in the community.
And do we have some kind of, I mean, I totally, I'm for this, I'm just curious. Don't we have, what do we have right now? I thought we had something in place for homeownership or loaning.
We do have a couple of sources of funds for homeownership. Again, those are restricted to folks earning less than 80% area median income for the most part. And unfortunately, there are some issues right now between the state HCD and HUD, and so we don't have access to any of those programs right now. They're basically on a lockdown until they get their issues worked out.
And then, yeah, I mean, I guess just what comes to mind is just, you know, what I've gathered from the housing market over the last couple of years is that the houses here have, you know, really gone up in value and they're really expensive. And if, I mean, we should definitely do this, just, you know, because we can. But if anybody in 120% AMI would even, you know, be able to be able to buy something, I guess.
Yeah, it would be a tight squeeze, you know, just to be frank. But there are other sources that we can, or other uses for these funds rather, including predevelopment costs for projects that are coming forward, you know, rental housing of up to 120% area median income, and a couple of other uses that we'd like to look at. You can help with the development of accessory dwelling units. We could help with down payment assistance for moderate income folks. So the recommendation to staff is that we create a plan that allows us to be as flexible as possible so that over the course of the next couple of years, as we, you know, find what works and, you know, discover new areas within the market, that we can use these funds to apply some city pressure to help people out, that we'd be able to do that.
And then it says, under number two, the predevelopment, development, and acquisition, rehabilitation, affordable rental ownership housing, so on, or 150% of AMI in high cost areas. And then it says see appendix B for a list of, is that just referencing another document or was that included?
Yeah, that's referencing another document that we did not include in the staff report here. We can certainly bring that back.
That's okay. So are we in a high cost area?
I'd have to look into that.
Okay. All right, thanks, man.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to notice a hearing for October 5th, 2022, to authorize submission of the city's PLHA program application.
And I'm sorry, I should have mentioned, it'd be nice to take the date out of that because we may, we're still working on some internal issues.
Okay, well, let me remove a date and for direct staff to notice a hearing in the future to authorize submission of the city's PLHA program application.
Second.
Did you have questions, Councilmember Matthews? Okay, let's go ahead and see if we have any public input on this matter.
There's no online public input.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, so that takes us to our last oral and written communications. And the city appreciates public input. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters that are not on the agenda. And please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council are limited to three minutes with, and we'll go ahead and there's unlimited access to this, so anybody, no cards necessary. If you've, those that want to speak in person, if you want to come and line up behind the podium, that would be great. We'll get to you folks first and then we will go to the online people.
Hello again, council members, staff, and folks in the room and on Zoom and et cetera. My name's Joanne McGary, and I'm speaking today about a very deep concern I have about our community and the future and our energy use and the past and our energy use. And many of you may have read the North Coast Journal cover story on the 44 feet and the nuclear waste that is now buried on a bluff in our bay and the concerns about the safety of all that. But in reading this article, I was very, very, very concerned to read that the RCA organization that we belong to in terms of our energy needs is considering signing a contract with the reactivated, apparently coming back online Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant for part of our energy needs. As I left my house after looking online at various things, I noticed that Julie Folkerson had posted something about Europe in concern about their energy reality was doing some blackouts and lights-off concepts, you know, some very large-scale conservation efforts in order to not have to rely on as much energy. I'm very, very concerned about nuclear energy, and I'm very, very concerned that this community would potentially be contracting down in San Luis Obispo County's nuclear power plant where I used to live nearby in Santa Barbara and was very involved in a lot of Diablo Canyon issues with Mothers for Peace out of San Luis Obispo. And so I just think, I was thinking about what I wanted to say about all this, and Sarah Berales is coming and she sings Be Brave, and I want our community to be brave and bold and do things differently, boldly, radically, in order for us to avoid plugging into nuclear power and to avoid the climate realities that we're dealing with. And in that vein, I have some posters here for this Which Way the Wind Festival that is occurring in a few days and a few weeks. And you can look at it, and it's all about the Golden Rule Boat sailing for Nuclear Free World and some different activities that are happening. So I'm really concerned about this Diablo Canyon thing, I just want you to know. So be brave and let's not do this.
Thank you, Joanne.
I'm Fred Wise, Honorable Mayor, and city council members, staff. At a previous meeting, Community Development Director David Loia said that we will likely not have a Cadillac-level form-based code. I want to know what will it cost to get one? I want the best form-based code we can afford. And in light of that, I am looking at the university's figures. They, the figure of $458 million that has been allocated to them, I feel we are eligible for 2% of that, it's $9.6 million, over a period of eight years, about $1.2 million a year specifically for development for our community. I mentioned six months ago, I looked at other cities in California. Arcata has a budget for the Community Development Department of about one-third of that of other cities on a per capita basis. It's just not enough to do a good job. I appreciate the job that they're doing, but with more money, I think they could do a better job. I mentioned earlier at the joint study session, it was a kind of a test to see what would happen with the framework that we have with bringing materials from the committees to the city council. The, in all fairness to the city council, the planning commission among the seven people have about 150 years of planning experience. Whatever city council we have after, or the three people who will be involved in the vote will not have close to that much. I know that the framework is designed so that the materials, the planning commission is a recommending body. I urge you to rely on them for leadership role. Just as I said, I think that the public needs a three-to-o vote on a city council, although I think they need a six-to-one. I mentioned Itlos Gatos, there is a contentious general plan. Almost immediately after it was passed, the, it's been put on a voter referendum, and they're going to vote on the housing element of their general plan, which I think is a terrible idea. I think the planners would do a much better job than the people, unfortunately. I mean, I'm all in favor of the democratic process, but in this case, both the Community Development Department and the Planning Commission and the city council, I think, have more sense. The last thing, which is extremely important, there's no legal rights to build L Street. I think that that matter needs to be resolved immediately. If the city knows how to get the legal rights to build that street, I think the public needs to hear this. If not, it should be removed from consideration entirely. Thanks very much. And also, I'll refer to your portal or arcataone.com, special for you, I'll add to it as necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred.
All right, our first online speaker is Patricia. Go ahead, Patricia. Can you unmute yourself, Patricia?
Okay, I always forget that.
You're good.
So hello, everybody. So I came across in the, on the internet, I came across the Arcata Rails with Trails Usability Study and Operations Plan of 2010. So there's always this pastel-colored drawing that I had in my, my memory of a park on, that was supposed to be located on L Street, and I couldn't figure out where that came from. And lo and behold, it's inside that plan. So under, under this pic, the picture of this park that was proposed on L Street, it says, "L Street will be where the city and the trail converge, creating a vibrant community gathering space." So the rails, the plan for the Rails with Trail and the vision and, you know, the plan for its creation is covered extensively in the 160 pages of this, this plan. So again, it says, in, so under the section of Trail Amendments, and there's quite a few pages on the L Street Conception Plan, and again, it says, "The one, well, the one location where the Arcata's Rails with Trail interfaces the street grid network of the city," that L Street. This is a very low-volume street with almost exclusively local traffic. This is the ideal location for a shared-use street that includes the Arcata Rails with Trail, end of quote. So L Street between 13th and Samoa was proposed to be a multi-use street or Bicycle Boulevard, if you may. The plan was to close the street through traffic with ballards and permitting just fire and local access. So some of the Trail Amendments and the Trail Visions that were listed were, at the time, colored pavings at intersections, site furnishings, trees, bicycle parking, and then it goes on for sculpture footings for art installation, food cart spaces, planters for, with seating for community garden spaces. They proposed having a large bronze statue of a replica of a Wiat basket to honor the history of the Wiat tribe, a faux roundhouse closet to celebrate the history of the Arcata and Mad River Railroad, and it was a good location, they thought, for a train engine or car. So I'd like to know what happened to this plan. We need it now more than ever, especially if we bring these people, you know, the infill-in. I think this community can really, really benefit for it. And last night, we heard four plans for the two blocks of Eighth and Ninth Streets. And so I'm wondering, like, we need, now we need, forget Plan B, we want four alternatives to K Street, to make K Street safer, and L Street should really become a linear park. That's what it was destined for, and it would just enhance all of Arcata. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Patricia. Our next public speaker is Matthew. Go ahead, Matthew.
Hi, this is Matthew Marshall. I'm the Director of the Redwood Coast Energy Authority, and I confess, I was only listening with one ear while cooking dinner, but I heard a previous public commenter mention Redwood Coast Energy Authority procuring power from Diablo Canyon, and I just wanted to make clear that we are not intending to do that. We've actually had for a number of years the option to receive a no-cost allocation of power from Diablo Canyon, and we've consistently rejected that allocation of no-cost power because our board has adopted a policy against nuclear power. So I need to follow up with the public commenter on where that impression came from, but we're not intending to procure any nuclear power. And I just wanted to make that clear, and I'll track down who the public commenter was and clarify that with her. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. She's a hard one to track down.
We think she'll find you. No more online public comments.
Okay, thank you. Next, that takes us to council and staff reports. Do we have any other staff updates?
I just wanted to share a couple of accolades with the council that we've received over the last, let's say, two weeks with the, in the police department. The first one is for our Officer Holly Ratcliffe, who received recognition from the Regional Humboldt County Mothers Against Drunk Driving for her work on DUI outreach and education and enforcement, which was nice to have that recognized. I mean, it's unfortunate, but we do see quite a bit of it throughout Arcata. And then the second one is even a little bit broader, which was the Humboldt County's recognition of our critical, our CIT teams. So the Critical Intervention Services Teams went nationally from Humboldt County. We, Evan Beechel, from our Community Response Unit, was recognized at the CIT National Conference in Philadelphia last week for his work in outreach, first response to mental health crises within our community, and for continuing to help educate additional staff within the police department and working with our miss team. So kudos to both of them for the good work that they do in our community, and it was really nice to see the recognitions.
Thank you for that.
Can I add on to that by saying that I had the privilege of doing a ride-along on Friday with Sergeant Scallan, who is in charge of the Sidenson Outreach Team? And I just had such a really wonderful experience seeing how he has made such connections with the people of Arcata, some of them he's had connections with as long as 10 years, taking them to services and really getting to know them. It was an honor to ride along with him. He's the true definition of a servant leader, so I thank him. I think, thank Chief Ahern for having such, assembled such a really great team. So thank you for letting me come with you on Friday. It was fun. Okay, I just want to say that the I Block Party was wildly successful. They had a little debrief meeting yesterday on it and just, you know, getting back in after COVID. It was just great to see the community's support. They raised a lot of money for the Sister City Project, and so that is wonderful. I'll also add that I'll also add that I have an RCA meeting tomorrow, Joanne, so I'll make sure to put your points out there and be happy to talk to you about it a bit more too, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask for a quick update on, I guess there was an incident that happened over the weekend in front of the jam. Traditionally, I would, you know, get an email or a text or something. And so I was just hoping, you know, I could use this time to, you know, if you could share with me any details.
I don't have a lot of details. I will tell you, it's a very active investigation, but there was a pretty substantial fight that occurred outside the jam. There were two individuals that were injured and taken to Mad River Hospital. My understanding is that they both stayed locally for treatment and that the jam and the owner of the jam is currently working with our detectives on pulling video and identifying potential sort of agitators or suspects in that. My understanding is that there are a couple of suspects that have been identified. I don't even know who they are at this point, not public information, and we're following up on those leads. Once we do have some secured information, I'll make sure the whole council gets that. And yeah, if anybody does have information or was at the jam or on the plaza on that night and saw or heard or has since heard anything, we do really encourage you to reach out to Arcata Police Department.
Yeah, along those lines, City Manager Deemer, do we have any updates on the citizen, the community ambassador program?
Yeah, so all we have, six, we had seven. One candidate pulled out, but we've made another offer. So we have one that's still in background. The other six have completed hiring. They actually came through, they were in the police department today for their initial orientation, and they're just starting training. So I don't want to put those deadlines out there that we can't meet. I'll say for sure by November 1st, they will be out on the street. We do hope that it's sooner than that, but they are officially kicked off in training. So that's great. Thanks.
And I was able to, we had our homelessness meeting, a services meeting at the safe parking program today, and council member Stoma got to go. It was really impactful. I think, you know, at first, it was on our radar a lot because we had the unofficial safe parking, you know, situation out front that people were concerned about. But once that got cleaned up and taken care of, it's just kind of been quiet, hasn't been brought up. And I know now why. It's being run really well. They have, they have not had incidences there, like negative incidences where the police need to be called. People are really grateful and happy. We were greeted, I was greeted by someone by name, somebody I'd known from the past from Little League, which was really neat. And we had a couple of the clients come and sit with us at our meeting and share their stories, which brought tears to everyone's eyes because it was just really sweet. And I think what's important for everyone to know is that the program is very successful. So they, the rate of people just kind of going back to the street versus actually getting into permanent housing or, you know, to their destinations of where they would like to be is really on the positive side. They're making great progress in that. So Arcata House is really pleased with what they're doing, and I think all of us that were there were really impressed and pretty humbled to be there. So just wanted to share that with all of you because that's, you know, what everyone here helped vote to make that happen. So they were really, expressed a lot of gratitude, provided, wanted to be sure that we had drinks and snacks when we got there. And so it was just really thoughtful and really sweet, so.
I have nothing, nothing to report, but I agree with what Stacy said. I was glad I was had that opportunity to go and, you know, sort of keeping track of all the things that are going on here and there. So, thank you.
Okay, so if we don't have any further reports, then it looks like we will be adjourning. So have a lovely evening, everyone.